Good evening, everyone. It is 6:01 and I would like to call this meeting to order. If you would please stand to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll the call, please. Connie?
Chris Mikowski.
Here.
Terry Lautner.
Here.
Kyle Travis.
Here.
Jeff Shaw.
Here.
Dave Darga.
Here.
Jordan Gallagher.
Here.
Connie Preston.
Here.
Thank you. Item four, Declaration of Conflict of Interest. If any board member sees an item on the agenda this evening that they think could create a conflict, please indicate that now. Seeing none, I would like to move on to our public hearings. First one is item five A, the annual adjustment of the role for the East Timber Woods, South Fox Valley Lane, and South Cottonwood Drive Road Maintenance Special Assessment District. It is 6:02 and I would like to open the public hearing. If anyone would like to comment on those. Seeing none, it's 6:02 and I'd like to close the public hearing. Item five B, annual adjustment of the role for the Blue Ridge Lane, Old Orchard Road, and South Orchard Way Road Maintenance Special Assessment District. It is 6:02 and I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone would like to say anything? Seeing none, it's still 6:02. I'd like to close that public hearing. We are on to item six, public comment. If anyone has any public comment, come on up to the podium. If you are doing public comment, you have three minutes. Please address your comments to the board and if you don't mind giving us your name and address. You've heard this before, haven't you, Sue? We'd appreciate it.
Two and a half minutes. Sue Jones, 12684 South Cedar Lane. I'd like to read to you item four of the supervisor's report that was in tonight's e-Pack. I have been contacted by a couple supervisors in other townships that are trying to figure out the short-term rental issue. Apparently, our ordinance is one of the better ones out there as they are looking to copy it. That should be gratifying recognition of our zoning amendment and licensing ordinance that took almost three years to develop and enact. But so far, one proof of its effectiveness seems to be missing. And that is enforcement of the cap on the number of licenses. Only when the short-term rentals operating without licenses in the township are shut down will we know if the ordinance is effective or just words on paper. Currently unlicensed, there are a number of houses and what appear to be accessory dwelling units being advertised and operated as short-term rentals in our township. I brought this up at last month's board meeting when the host compliance contract was up for renewal. But information regarding identification services provided by host compliance and enforcement of the ordinance with respect to unlicensed STRs was unclear. I'm sure you remember that 265 residents signed a petition against allowing short-term rentals in our residential neighborhoods. My concern is what happens if there is no consequences for ignoring or violating the ordinance? If there is not strict enforcement of the cap of 93 licenses, will our neighborhoods once again be faced with an unwelcome increase in unlicensed and unregulated STRs? I appreciate that the township's planning department is very busy right now and Sarah may not have time to dig into the issue. If additional staff is needed to follow up on the task, I'm requesting that you authorize it. In the meantime, I'm planning to give Sarah the information that I've gathered. Residents need the board's commitment on enforcement to serve as a deterrent to unlicensed STRs operators in our township. Perhaps you can provide us with an update of your progress at next month's board meeting? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time?
Jim O'Rourke, Elmwood Township. Thanks for what you guys do. I mean that seriously. Thanks. Elmwood's looking good. I mean, it really is. You have my agenda in front of you for tomorrow morning. Again, anything on there that you have questions about, give me a call later after the meeting. Other than that, things are going good and if you have any questions for me, call me up, okay?
Thanks, Jim. Thank you for what you do, too. Any other public comment at this time? It is 6:06 and I would like to close public comment. Moving on to item seven, the consent calendar. The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with in one board motion without discussion. Any member of the public, board, or staff may ask that any item of the consent calendar be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. In this evening's consent calendar, we have reports from Treasurer, Planning, Zoning, Fire, and Harbor Master. We have minutes from the 4/10/23 and the 4/27/23 board meetings. We also have post-audit invoices dated 4/15/23 through 4/30/23. Any member of the board would like anything removed in place elsewhere? Any member of the public or staff? Seeing none, I look for a motion.
Making motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
May I have the closed session minutes back, please?
Item eight is agenda approval. Any additions or subtractions or modifications?
I would just mention that when we schedule a special meeting, we can wait until we get to that, but we have a few other items to add to that.
Okay. If there are none, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Moving on to reports, supervisor's report. You have my stuff in front of you. A couple of things I want to add. Had an email back and forth today with somebody that's doing electric boats. I actually printed off the email and just set it on your desk. That's something we can address in a future meeting. We don't need to talk about that tonight, but I just wanted you guys to be aware of that. It's been very frustrating with our drinking fountains. So, all those outside drinking fountains that we purchased were leaking this spring. You know, we paid, what, $3,800 bucks, I think, and we ended up a piece for them to be installed and all that kind of stuff. So, two of them, they were able to fix. Two of them, they're saying we need to replace. There's some debate between them and us whether our grounds crew winterized them correctly or not. They're saying they didn't. Our grounds crew said they blew them out. So, I have some quotes. Again, we're going to look at that, perhaps at that special meeting, to decide what you guys want to do because they're saying they'll sell them to us for their price. There's still going to be $2,000 apiece if we want to replace those two. Plus, the one at the marina is not working either. That one's leaking. So, yeah, I've been going around and around with these guys. It's really, really frustrating to me because I had this discussion with them before we ever put it on our agenda about winterizing them. And the first group of fountains, they said we were going to have to take off the wall and then they got quoted by L.K. and they said, "No, they're easy to winterize." So, I'm still working out the details on that. I'm going to try to bring you quotes to go back to a simple fountain. Or if we want to replace those. Can't tell you how frustrated I am about some stupid drinking fountains, but they were able to get this one up here working, the one at the south pavilion. The ones that aren't working is the north pavilion and the playground drinking fountain down here. So, so that's, I'm going to bring that to you at another meeting. Getting quotes for security cameras and the door closers should go inside those metal frames because somebody, our sheriff's height, as it turns out, hits their head on them. And the power plan has a grant for that kind of stuff that opens up in August, so I'm trying to be preemptive and get those because we have to do a resolution if we want to apply for that. So, just want to let you know that's coming. TART is interested in talking to us about perhaps renting that. They're going to be on the agenda next month. And we met with Michigan Broadband today about the marina. They, looks like they could probably save us quite a bit of money if we signed up with them, potentially. So, but we're going to bring that to another meeting. We've got enough to talk about tonight. So, those two items may be on the special meeting. So, that's all I got. You guys have any questions about that stuff right now? It's stuff I'll bring to you. Trustee remarks. Anybody?
I would just like to welcome Zach, who's got big shoes to fill with the retirement of Eric Carlson, so. Welcome.
We appreciate it. Anybody else? Engineers report. Our engineers are not here this evening. Other officer remarks. Chief, you got anything for us? Nothing other than your report? Okay. Pete?
No.
Just your report? Rookie, you already said your piece?
Already said it. Thank you, sir.
Alrighty. And communications from the clerk?
Well, tomorrow at between 4:30 and 6 o'clock, there is a beach bot demo down at Grellikville Harbor Park. It's a little automatic. I don't know. What is it?
Well, Chris can probably talk on that when she steps up here.
It's to clean the beach.
Yeah.
So, think of it as a, what is that, a Roomba?
Yeah, it's a Roomba for the beach.
So, anyway, if anybody wants to go, check that out. Sounds like fun.
A Boomba? For the beach. Anything else? No old business? And item 11, no new business. No, I'm kidding. Item 11A, Watershed Center request for Swim GT Bay event. Chris, come on up.
Thank you. So, real quick to answer that, yes, it is. We actually have a marine one, which is more like a Roomba, but the beach cleaning one just sifts through the sand. So, we were just down there today for Northern Michigan Startup Week, checking out how we were going to get it out and about, so anybody who wants to come, please check that out. So, again, my name's Christine Christman. I'm the Executive Director at the Watershed Center. I also want to start by thanking you guys for your service. Public service can be challenging and the staff of the Watershed Center appreciates what you guys do and your dedication to our community. I want to give a little bit of a background about the swim for Grand Traverse Bay that we've done for several years and see if there is a way that the township can support how we want to move forward with that. So, on the second Saturday in August from 2016 to 2019, the Watershed Center held the swim for Grand Traverse Bay, which was one of the region's only point-to-point open water swims. Every year, we had about 100 swimmers that would take part in the two-mile swim. We launched, we launched, everybody left out of Grellikville Harbor Park and swam their way down to the volleyball beach in Traverse City. It was a good event for folks who were training for a triathlon, who were interested in just some challenging recreation swimming, or really just people who are really interested in clean water and were looking for some sort of challenge. We had folks from all over the country that came to the event and I mentioned about 100 folks that were here each one of the years that we did it. Then in 2020, we had COVID. We had to cancel and really, the swim has been on hiatus ever since. We continue to get folks who reach out to us and ask when we're going to bring it back. And every year, we've been trying to make plans in order to be able to do that. And so, this year, we're excited to announce that we are bringing it back in 2024 on August 10th. And we started talking to the city of Traverse City about getting the permits that we needed in order to have our end point at volleyball beach. And I'm sure everybody is aware that Grandview Parkway is going to be under construction that year and it was basically a barrier we weren't able to surmount. So, we aren't able to have our ending point at volleyball beach. When we first started talking about the swim, we had various places that we could go. We thought about Bryant Park. We had a couple other options in Traverse City, but honestly, the crossing the mouth of the marina was always a safety hazard that we really weren't interested in getting involved in. So, if we weren't able to use volleyball beach and we weren't comfortable with any of our other solutions, we thought maybe this year would be, or next year, would be a good year to do maybe just an out and back. So, instead of a point-to-point, we would do an out and back event. So, um, for the past four, so for all of the swim events that we've had, Elmwood Township has been very generous and allowed us to use the pavilion as well as the parking at Brewery Creek so that we could get folks. We had a shuttle that would bring folks across the street to the starting point and would bring folks back to their cars when they were done. We were there at 6:00 and we were out by 9:00. So, it was never really an issue. We didn't conflict with, you know, folks renting the pavilion and we were fairly low impact for just being able to be there, have registration tables set up, get all of our swimmers in the water, and kind of pack up and leave. So, recognizing that we are going to, we would potentially have an increased use of the park, I spoke with Mr. Shaw and he recommended that I come in front of all of you and see if there was potential for us to hold the entire event. Next year, I mentioned August 10th, basically, our timeframe is from 6:00 to noon. So, we're interested in working with the township to ensure that folks still have access. You know, people who are coming to access the park would still be able to do so and meet with any other conditions or requirements that you guys might have. Recognizing that the needs of the swim may change depending on sort of what we decide to do and how we decide to do it. Really quickly, I thought I could just do a super quick walkthrough of what the day looks like. I mentioned we're there at 6:00. We just have registration tables for the folks who are getting there. We set up our timing equipment, the way for the folks to get in the water. It's actually really great access. The sidewalk that you guys have right down to the beach is a great funnel point so we can count people in really easily. And we launch folks off of there. When they come back, in the past, they have to be back within two hours. So, if the folks are not back, we make sure that we have those folks out of the water and everybody is present and accounted for. There is a safety plan. We obviously involve all of the permits that we need. There are marine patrol that's in the water. We have, the sheriff and fire department are aware of what we're doing and are helping and assisting when we need it. And then when everybody gets back, previously, we've held a pancake breakfast. So, the Sunrise Rotary has been really great in volunteering to help do that. We have a pancake breakfast. We have some awards. We pack up and that's sort of the extent of it. So, the, in terms of the things that we have used in the past, you know, some tents, a couple of tents, some tables and chairs, you know, we've had to rent porta-johns and trash and recycling equipment and things like that. So, those are things that we're all prepared to be able to do if it's necessary or however things might work out. So, in terms of what the day looks like itself, it's a fairly low-impact event. We can get away with doing things differently than we've done before, but we've been, we have done it for four years and we have a good history of being very sensitive to the places that we are actually using for the event. So, at this time, I'm not exactly certain the specific needs that we will need. My hope is that the board is agreeable to us perhaps working with the township more to figure out some of those details of what that might look like, what types of requirements you guys might have. Obviously, we're able to pay any fees that there might be for renting the pavilion or anything else that might happen. So, as we can get the, if we can get the nod to plan a little bit more, I'm not exactly sure the, sort of the process that you guys might have to hold an event like this. So, all I really wanted to do was be able to kind of present an overview picture. I can answer any questions that you might have and see what you guys might recommend for next steps to move forward.
Guys have questions? Christine? How, how long is it, the swim?
So.
Distance?
It's two miles.
Okay.
So, we'll, we'll have to reroute our course. It used to go sort of straight out east and then head south. So, there'll probably be some sort of box that'll go out straight off of the beach.
Okay. And it starts at what time?
Starts at 8:00 and the swimmers are required to be in by 10:00. We've only had one time we've ever had to pick somebody up who hasn't finished yet, so.
Okay.
And there are safety paddlers and folks, the safety crew and then the swimmers themselves can have a support kayaker or paddler if they want to as well. So, the safety of the folks that are out there is pretty well taken care of.
Okay.
So, it sounds like they just rent the pavilion for the morning or the first part of the day, the early?
Typically, we don't rent the south pavilion, though, do we?
Oh, I thought they were going to use the morning. Wouldn't they?
Oh. The north, yes.
You want the bigger one.
You'd want the bigger one.
Yes, that's, in the past, that's where we've set up stuff in the morning and.
Smaller one is right there on the beach. That's what I thought. You might want the smaller one.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, one of my, I guess, one of my questions, you know, I.
Right.
Yeah, it's the number of folks that might be there.
Okay.
So, if we've got between the swimmers and the support staff that's there, there's about 150 people and then depending on the spectators or other folks that come. So, it might be a question of where the best space to spread out might be or if we needed to bring in tables or things like that. If there's a place that we could kind of be off where we're not taking over everything. I'm hopeful there's a way we can, I was just down there today making some ideas, but yeah. There are quite a few. There is a, about 150 people that we're hoping that will be there, so.
What happened in the past? Did they rent anything or did they just hold it?
Yeah, they were there and gone. You know, they got there at 6:00 and they were gone by 9:00.
Did they have their pancake breakfast?
Did you?
That was at the other.
That was at the other end.
Yeah, we had all of that stuff down at volleyball beach. Yep, so we just launched everybody and then picked up our stuff and we're out by 9:00 and I think it's 10:00 when you rent the pavilion out, so we never crossed paths with folks who had rented it. We were always out of there, packed up and gone by noon. So, the folks are all in. I mean, the first person comes in within 40 minutes. And so, the pancake breakfast is kind of ongoing. Folks stick around. So, after that two-hour mark, when we can identify the winners for the different categories of, you know, age groups and things like that and do our announcements, then folks are usually gone. So, yeah, we're packed up and out of there. I'm driving home by 12:30 that day.
And why they couldn't just rent the north pavilion and volleyball?
What day of the week is the August 10th?
Saturday.
It's a Saturday.
Okay, that one, it just, for the last couple of years, that particular weekend, everybody calls the first of January and wants that pavilion for that day. So, it's just, just a heads up, just letting you know that somebody, there's either reunions or there's a wedding or something. And one year, Carrie had like three or four people ready to call on January 1st to reserve that day or that weekend for the, for a wedding or whatever it was.
Sounds like they would be done by the.
Well, we rented out, we rent out.
Twice a day?
Right, but we rented out from 10:00 to 2:00 or 3:00 or 4:00 to, oh.
Three to seven.
Yeah, three to seven, so.
I think we would just put them in as the morning rental.
Yeah.
So, it'd be.
Yep.
I guess we, for a large event like that, we would let them schedule it further ahead.
Yeah, that was the other piece was.
So.
If they didn't clean up, then we'd keep their deposit of 50 bucks.
Exactly.
That's right.
Honky-dory.
Or they give us their beach bot.
That's right. Yeah, I think it's a good, I think it'd be a great thing.
Yeah, I would think, and I'm sure you guys carry some insurance for the event.
Yes, absolutely.
So, we'd want to be an additional insured on it.
Yep, absolutely. We've done that in the past, even just starting there. So, and then the other question I guess I would have would be the use of Brewery Creek parking lot. I know that you guys have some things going on there. I also know that there's the potential to use the, probably the Discovery Center and Pier parking lot either as main or as overflow. So, that would be the one other thing is to, so that we don't have folks that are taking up spaces in the park itself if it was, we were able to use that. And that could be a discussion going forward, too, when we do, like I said, shuttle folks over so that they're, they aren't crossing the street. But that would be the one other thing that would be a little bit of an unusual.
You have your own shuttle service then?
Yes.
What, I don't know what our plans are for Brewery Creek when we're going to be constructing down there.
Hopefully by this fall.
Oh, this fall.
If we get our permits from Eagle.
Still that, where it enters onto Grandview, that lot right there. And you could park quite a few cars in there if they had somebody directing it.
Right. Right.
On the grass area there.
Yep. Yeah.
That wouldn't interfere with any construction.
Well, except for they might have all their equipment there. The equipment storage favorite spot of everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, happy to work out details as we know more, too.
I think we can work out the details, too. I mean, I know Brewery Creek, I know we need that overflow parking. Doesn't usually get too busy till noon, does it?
No.
So, they'd be out of there by noon.
Norris Schools usually lets the overflow there, too.
Yeah, and that'd be another thing you could address is if, if, for some reason, you couldn't use Brewery Creek if it was parked full or whatever, Norris Elementary, the old Norris Elementary. They have that big parking lot and he's usually pretty willing to, in events like this, to let people park there.
It's a good thought.
That could be. If you're shuttling anyway, you know, that's just right around the corner.
The old coal pile, is that parking? I don't even know. What do they do there now? The car parking lot, yeah?
I don't know that they've got that all approved or, I don't know. They may.
Yeah, they would have some space, probably not as much as we would need, but yeah.
I think.
I was talking to Matt today and he's said we could use that space as well, so.
Probably you can figure out how many you got here, here and here, you know, and you can probably get it all figured out.
Yeah, I think we could.
I'll make the motion to authorize the Swim GT Bay event at Grellikville Harbor Park on August 10th, 2024.
We have a motion and support. Any other discussion or any more questions? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Thank you very much.
And then we can just figure out the details.
I'll keep in touch. Yep, absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Christine.
Pencil.
Pickleball scheduling request. So, Rita came in. She's 92 now. And she says she's not playing this year, but the last, but the senior Rita's would like to continue to play. So, I don't think we had any complaints last year. You know, a couple of years ago, we had somebody complain that they couldn't get on the court, but when I invited him to come talk to the board, they never showed up. So, it's pretty cool to see all those ladies in their 80s and 90s playing down there.
And it's just two days a week, two hours a day.
Monday, Wednesday, two hours, yeah.
Yeah, and we don't have our tennis guy anymore.
No, we don't.
Doing classes down there, so.
They did invite me to play last year. As it turns out, I'm undefeated.
Pickleball?
Pickleball, yeah. Smoked those old. I played one game. I tell everybody I'm undefeated, but, so.
I'd move that we allow the pickleball scheduling for Monday and Wednesdays, 9:00 to 11:00, whenever they want to use them there. I'm not sure when their league starts or.
Soon as the weather is nice.
Okay.
We have a motion and support. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Floodplain resolution. Sarah, come on up.
I think consideration of the zoning ordinance amendments. I think that's before the floodplain.
Oh, I'm sorry. You were correct.
I mean, I'm up here for a while, yeah.
Yeah, sorry about that.
No worries. So, I guess we'll talk about the consideration of PCZO 2017-0421 first. This is the text that was suggested by our floodplains coordinator for the state of Michigan. You guys have all seen this text before. If new questions have arisen since, you know, last meeting, happy to address them, but I think it's pretty straightforward. I do have a recommended motion for you.
I'll move to adopt ordinance number 2023-02, zoning ordinance 2017-0421, zoning ordinance amendment to amend section 2.2 definitions, to modify the definition of basement, and to amend section 3.7 to incorporate NFIP requirements.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? And we need to do a roll call, don't we? Roll call, old please.
I'll vote yes. Jordan Gallagher?
Yes.
Dave Darga?
Yes.
Kyle Travis?
Yes.
Terry Lautner?
Yes.
Chris Mikowski?
Yes.
Jeff Shaw?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you.
All right, so the next one is consideration of PCZO 2017-0420. So, this is a nice plethora of text amendments to the zoning ordinance. Again, this text was before you at your last meeting for introduction. At your request. Um, at your request, um, the text regarding extensions, that's been removed. Um, it didn't change the intent of the ordinance, so it didn't go back to the PC. Um, again, I do have a recommended motion for you guys. I'm happy to answer any questions if they've arisen since the last meeting.
Questions for Sarah on this?
I'd make a motion, we adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash oh three. Zoning ordinance two thousand seventeen dash oh four dash twenty. Zoning ordinance amendment to amend that section two point two definitions to modify the definitions of club, building height, campground, motel, and ad hotel. Amend section five point four to have the use routine essential services aligned with section nine point eight, be one point three, one dash three, amend section eight point three dash to eight point six to streamline site plan review, amend section nine point five to correct the clerical error.
Second.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Connie.
Jordan Gallagher?
Yes.
Dave Darga?
Yes.
Kyle Travis?
Yes.
Terry Lautner?
Yes.
Chris Mikowski?
Yes.
I'll vote yes, and Jeff Shaw?
Yes, thank you. Now, on the floodplain resolution.
All right, so this resolution that you guys have before you is something that is currently in place, but does need to be updated. Um, it was put in place in twenty eighteen. Um, this resolution is also going before the county, so pretty much the township, we do have floodplain uh, regulations and requirements. It's actually enforced through the, uh, county building department. Um, so this, again, resolution is, you know, between the township and the county to, to say, county, please enforce our floodplain regulations. It's more detailed than that, but in summary, that's what it is. And I did not draft this resolution itself. This was, again, prepared. It's, all the communities in the area have the same text. Um, again, it was presented by, um, the state floodplains coordinator.
I'd make a motion, we accept the introduction of the floodplain ordinance and publish for consideration at the next special township board meeting.
Um, no, you, that's another document that's coming for you.
That's the next one. Oh, that's the next one.
This is the intergovernmental slash floodplain development resolution. So it's adopt resolution number nine, if that helps.
Okay, I move we adopt resolution number nine of twenty twenty-three, the Michigan Community Resolution. And intergovernmental agreement to manage floodplain development for the National Flood Insurance Program, and to authorize township staff to facilitate execution of the resolution between the township and the towns.
We have a motion and support.
I'm sorry, who was support?
Uh, Chris. Any other discussion? Roll call, please, Connie.
Kyle Travis?
Yes.
Terry Lautner?
Yes.
Chris Mikowski?
Yes.
Dave Darga?
Yes.
Jordan Gallagher?
Yes.
I'll vote yes, and Jeff Shaw?
Yes. Introduction, Sarah.
So this is the introduction to the floodplains ordinance. This, I believe, is the last thing I am up here for. Um, so again, this is something that is currently in place, um, since twenty eighteen, but as FEMA has updated their maps, um, which will become effective June seventh, the township also needs to update its ordinance that references the new maps. So again, this is a requirement for the county, uh, sorry, for the county, but specifically the township to stay in the NFIP program. Um, this, again, this ordinance will need to be effective before June seventh, so this is part of the reason why we need to have a special meeting. Um, so I don't believe we have a date for that yet. Um, if we wanna discuss a date for that meeting before we go into the motion, that's fine, or if you use the recommended motion and discuss the, um, date of the special meeting, whichever way you prefer to go, it's up to you.
Think we can get the motion taken care of, and then we'll figure out the date.
I move we accept the introduction of the floodplain ordinance and publish for consideration at the next special township board meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and support. Any other discussion or questions for Sarah? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Sarah? I'm just enjoying you making all these long motions, Terry. This is cracking me up. Alrighty, Marina Surplus.
Should we discuss the date for the special meeting?
Schedule special meeting.
There we go. Yeah, thanks, we just said that. You were thinking of the thirtieth?
Yes.
Is that what you said?
And we could do a daytime. It's a, the thirtieth is a Tuesday?
The day after Memorial Day?
Yes.
The thirtieth, Tuesday?
What time, Connie?
Um.
One?
One.
Yeah, I think Kyle's probably probably the one with more on his calendar. Not that we're not all equally busy, but.
I probably wouldn't be available till like two-thirty.
That would be, should we say three o'clock?
With three, what for you, Terry, or is that too?
It's not gonna be a three-hour meeting, is it?
I don't think so.
It should work.
It could be, if you want it to be.
I'll make the motion to schedule a special meeting on May thirtieth at three PM for the reason of discussing the drinking fountain quotes, the bids from Michigan Broadband, um, our insurance renewal through the power plan, and for the consideration of the floodplain ordinance. Did I miss anything?
I think that was it.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Now Marina Surplus. Come on up, Pete.
Yeah, this is say, just the, um, to, uh, uh, decommission the skiff that we have down at the marina. It's not mentioned, but it's sitting on a trailer. There's a, so it'd be the boat, the trailer, and the old, um, nine point nine Mercury motor. Just need, uh, to pull that officially off the township rolls and, and liquidate it.
And we were thinking we would just take bids on that, like, you know, closed bids.
Yes.
Instead of trying to list it on Munisbit or one of those places, it would be just as efficient to put a sign on it down with Maria.
I move we authorize disposal of the, uh, boat, uh, trailer, and, uh, other motor, for whatever we can get for it.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion?
Are we gonna sell it all as one unit?
I believe we are, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Water doesn't work, maybe we give it to MHA, 'cause I don't think anyone's gonna give us any money for it, but if we're gonna sell it as a package, that's, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, right? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Pete. Now the bids for the wall posts and brackets. Cheapest bid is the last one. And how do you feel about that, Pete?
All three of the companies would be, um, I'd be fine with, and, uh, they include fabrication, installation. The cleanup afterward would be that we would, uh, replace the rotted wood that's sitting on that, uh, on the cap, on that steel cap. So, okay. The only difference would be, um, all three of the welders are recommending a, um, paint over powder coating, 'cause powder coating, you can't really recoat once it breaks underneath. If you go down to Clinch, you can see they're powder coated white rail, and it's breaking out from underneath, and you can't clean that up really to repaint it, where if you have a painted surface, you can just grind it and paint it at a low cost. But they all do include the painting.
With the, with the, uh, the design of this, with those bolts sticking out, are we gonna have any sort of a cushion or cover or anything over those?
The, everything facing the water will be wood.
Okay.
And it will extend, um, beyond the bracket, and the, the bolts will be through the side.
Okay.
And they'll be embedded into, the only thing showing might be a washer and the head of the bolt.
Okay.
Pete, in here, it does say that, uh, see the harbor master for height, height in, in the bottom?
Mm-hmm.
So you've thought about that with the low water level?
Yeah, the way, the way that I've got it designed is that they, those posts will, um, they'll act as guides, and we can raise and lower, the bracket will act as a guide, and we can raise and lower the post based on the water level.
It's like the bolts under, at the bottom are gonna be underwater, possibly?
No, this should be all above at the cap.
When the water level comes up?
Y- yes.
Because it hangs down.
Only the post.
Okay.
So, if you see, it's, uh, it's flush mounted on that, um, the cap, and it's welded to the cap.
Is this not the cap right here? This is the cap, and the steel rail goes down.
The steel rail goes to the edge, but not into the water.
Right. The way it looks in the diagram, it protrudes the steel rail that you are actually gonna bolt through, protrudes down maybe two point two feet.
That would be.
That's bolts into the four-by-six.
But the, the, the bolts themselves are above water. So you bolt it through the side into that bracket.
Right, they show bolts underwater, which could be underwater.
It could be, yes.
And if water goes up and you don't move the bolts in time, it's definitely gonna be underwater.
Right, so we can, w- w- we, that's the nice thing about that setup, is it's adjustable.
Like, kinda my question to that is, is if you raised, if you made it a four-by-six by ten instead of a four-by-six by eight,
Mm-hmm.
you would gain height, because most, some of the boats that come out that walk.
They're high.
Really high.
Yes.
And that's where you need to protect it. It's not underwater. You need to protect it above the water.
Right. I agree. Yeah, and that's, that's the beauty of that. We can put a ten, eight, six, whatever size we want.
Sounds like that would make more sense.
That would make more sense.
Cause then you got a couple more.
Other than that, it looks good, and, uh, except the, I would make a motion to accept the the low bid from Kielson Metal Works. In the amount of thirty-eight hundred dollars for fifteen pieces.
I'll support it.
We have a motion and support. Anybody else have any questions or thoughts on that? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
Good job on that. This is, did a good job designing that. Okay, resolutions to approve the rolls for road maintenance special assessment districts.
Just our annual adjustment to the roll. The figures, um, mostly for the road association, and they know if they have bigger projects coming up. So those numbers come in. The Timberwoods, South Fox Valley Lane, and South Cottonwood Drive with a total of fourteen thousand spread over the roll. So I would make the motion to adopt the resolution adjusting the annual special assessment rule for East Timberwoods Drive, South Fox Valley Lane, and South Cottonwood Drive Road Maintenance Special Assessment District.
Support.
A motion and support, discussion? Actually thought we might have somebody show this year for that, given all the stuff going on up at Timberly. Thought we might come in and wanna talk about it, but. So. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please, Connie.
Chris Mikowski?
Yes.
Terry Lautner?
Yes.
Kyle Travis?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Jordan Gallagher?
Yes.
Dave Darga?
Yes.
And Jeff Shaw?
Yes. Motion passes. Next one.
That one, total amount is five thousand ten dollars. And I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution eight of twenty twenty-three, a resolution adjusting the annual special assessment rule for South Blue Ridge Lane, East Old Orchard Road, and South Orchard Way Road Maintenance Special Assessment District.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please, Connie.
I'll vote yes. Chris Mikowski?
Yes.
Jordan Gallagher?
Yes.
Terry Lautner?
Yes.
Dave Darga?
Yes.
Kyle Travis?
Yes.
Jeff Shaw?
Yes, thank you. Item I, ratification of firefighters' contract. Uh, we had the closed meeting, and we all got to see it, and go over it, and talk about it, and all that stuff, so.
I'd make a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement with the firefighters' union, and to authorize the supervisor and the clerk to sign the agreement.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Anybody have any more thoughts or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And, um, let me echo Steve Schultz's comments, you know, the, the whole process was, was very professionally done and really well done. I thought, so, thank you. Uh, okay, um, I do wanna make one correction to the appointments. Item number five, Kristin Dale decided she does not wanna continue to serve on the Marina Committee, so scratch that one. All of the rest of them, we're looking to renew. Can renew them all at once if you guys would like.
I'd make a, uh, a motion to renew all of the suggested reappointments at one time. Named?
No.
How about per supervisor's memo?
Supervisor's request.
Okay.
Proposal, whatever.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Anybody have any discussion about it? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, you guys. Item K, request for permission for a twenty-one-gun military salute during a Grellikville Harbor Park rental. Connie, do you wanna?
Well, we just, we had a call, and they wanna, um, rent the Grellikville Harbor Park for Memorial for a veteran, and they were wondering if it would be okay to do that, and it's, it would be right around noon on a Saturday when the beach could possibly, it's for June. It could be a little busy. I just thought we'd get the board to chime in on that.
Who's would do it? Would be the American Legion?
It's, uh, I think it's the veteran, the, uh, VFW.
VFW?
Honor guard. I think the honor guard is kind of from different ones. Yeah, the guy, yeah.
That was my, my big question.
It's just the noise.
Yeah. Yeah. Connie was afraid if everybody was hitting the beach down, that somebody might come and complain, so we said, yeah, let's take it to the board, just.
Yeah, I wanted to say, yeah, um, the court gave us permission for this.
Yeah.
I want everyone involved.
I move we authorize them to give the twenty-one-gun salute to the veterans who passed away at Harbor Park.
Support.
We have a motion and support, discussion? If you've ever been to one of those, holy cow, you can't help but cry.
Yeah.
You know, I, I, well, we'll vote on it, but I think it's a good idea. It educates the younger people.
Exactly.
As what's going on, and people that have provided a service for us.
Yeah.
So I think it's really good.
When they stand in front of the road and fold the flag and stuff, it's like.
Yeah, if they're on the beach, and then they see this, you know, you, it grabs your attention.
Right, exactly.
You know, and it's a great learning experience for young people.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we have a motion and support. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, you guys. We're on to item twelve, Dave, payment of invoices.
Make a motion to pay the invoices in the amount of eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and six dollars and seventy-three cents.
Support.
We have a motion and support, discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Onto extended public comment. Opposed? Onto extended public comment. It is six fifty. If there's any public comment at this time, please state your name and address.
I state your name. Robert Solkelnicki, Elmore Township. I would like to mirror what, um, our supervisor just said, that it was a very professional operation. That was run with the negotiations and we look forward to, on behalf of the local, we look forward to, uh, continuing to work for the township.
Awesome, thank you. And just so these guys all know, it's local number fifty-three eighty-seven. Thank you. It's six fifty and I'm gonna close public comment if there's nothing else. And it is six fifty-one and, uh, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.